Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor and Commissioner meeting. This will serve as our regular meeting on May 31st, 2018. And our invocation is going to be from our Mayor Pro Tem, Contehwa Durn. How you doing this evening?
I'm doing great. Right now at this time, our invocation will be coming from Pastor Reverend Theodore Brasswell, the pastor of Graham Chapel, CME Church of Quitman, Georgia, which is my uncle. We will be asking him to render our invocation on today. Mayor Pro Tem.
Let me go tell the Lord, thank you.
Thank you.
We can do better than that. Tell the Lord, thank you. We can go a little louder. Tell the Lord, thank you.
Thank you.
Amen. Paul says in First Stephen 5:18, "And all things give God thanks." Thanks. The will of God concerning you. Father, we thank you right now for being a God that is true and merciful. We thank you for your grace. We thank you for bringing us down through the years. For we would not be able to be here if it was not for you. We thank you, Lord, for bringing us. Sometimes you brought us when we was wrong, you still brought us. Being in the wrong place, God, you brought us. Same thing we shouldn't have said, but you brought us. So we come tonight, Lord, just to say thank you. Thank you for the City of Douglas. Thank you for every city commissioner, everybody that's part of this organization, Lord. We thank you, Lord. We just give you thanks. If we didn't have nothing else to say, thank you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
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 Thank you Pastor. Next, would you please stand for our pledge of allegiance. As always, we will be led by the Coffey High School Navy Junior ROTC. And this evening, we have Lieutenant Junior Grade Ramirez and Incent Marino. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Next, just a couple house cleaning notes. The next item on the agenda is the minutes, which is item number four. We've already placed that on the consent agenda. And if you travel down to item number seven, the second reading of the retirement, that has also been removed from the agenda. So if you will make those updates to your agenda. And at this time, the next item on the agenda will be the order, will be the approval of the order of the agenda.
So moved.
It's been motioned and properly second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we're going to recognize, recognition of our state track meet participants. And where do we start? We're going to have the Mayor Pro Tem to come out.
Mayor, if you, Stevie's gonna do the presentation in regard to who those candidates are.
Outstanding. How you doing Stevie? Doing okay?
All good, Mr. Mayor, as always, as always.
Good deal.
I tell you, you know, it's without, well, first of all, Coach Ronnie Graham, like Phil, must step forward as the coach of our track team. But I tell you, between track and our aquatic program, swim team, they'll have, has to be two of our more successful athletic programs. The numbers may not be as big as youth baseball, softball, and soccer. But as always, we always have kids that represent Douglas Coffee County quite well at the state level. Coach Graham, if you would come up and personally just acknowledge the kids, the participants, their names, you know, you spend a lot of quality time with them and really acknowledge those kids that actually won a state championship or placed second and third in the state. Coach Graham.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm Ronnie Graham. I've finally been in the system, this is the 34th year.
I was just getting ready to ask that. How long have you been coaching?
34 years.
34.
Yep.
Basically, Coach Graham coaches everything.
Not everything. From adults to kids.
Adults to kids.
Yeah, but I appreciate the time. I got four that should be here that's not here, that also went to state. But standing right there before y'all, I have two set of twins, Treana and Tyree. Been with her six years, and she been to state, six years, he been to state five years.
Wow.
And they welcome first to second place. And I have that little brother Tracy, this is second year, but he been to state both year with a first place and a fifth place this year.
Great.
They did good.
Congratulations.
And I have a new participant, Jayla. This is her first year, and she paced in two events, first in softball, throw, and fourth in the shots.
All right.
I appreciate the parents for bringing them out. And next year, I'm looking to make this thing even much stronger. That's my plan for next year.
Outstanding.
I want to get, I'd like to get a lot of participation from the Miller schools so I can make this big and go back to my field day event for all the Miller schools to go to the track, and I pick the best out of every one of them.
Outstanding.
That's the plan for next year. And I appreciate the time, appreciate everybody for showing up.
Are their parents here?
Yes, their parents here, let's stand. Ms. Roberts, Ms. James, I got grandparents, that here. They been faithful to God, they follow me everywhere I go.
Douglas was always to highlight our youth, to let the citizens of Douglas and Coffee County know that there are youth out there that represents us very well, that all our children are not lost, none of them are forgotten. But we have some children, and this is what I try to express to individuals all the time. When they are competing, they announce them from the City of Douglas and Coffee County. That name travels. But guess who our greatest ambassadors are? Our youth. So on behalf of the City of Douglas, as the Mayor of the City of Douglas, not only I am indebted to the participants that represent and serve as ambassadors to the City of Douglas, but I'm indebted to the parents, grandparents, for getting them back and forth. Because it is a team effort, and God knows I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I think I have Neben Swanson been with her five years, who is not here. Ariana Park been with her four years, who is not here. Jeremiah Buzel one year, who is not here. And, dude, I can't think of his name. They call him Superman. He been with her four years, and he ain't here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just 34 years?
34.
You must have started when you were seven years old. I thought I might give age to me.
To being a superb coach, you know, the city council, right?
That's right. Representing the great city of Black. Commissioner Graham?
That's right. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Mr. Graham has been a public servant for decades, decades. And it's always good to see Mr. Graham, because you know our kids are doing something productive, and that's always good. The next item on the agenda is going to be the second reading of the repeal and replacement of the solar panel ordinance, and that will be our city manager, correction, our city attorney.
Now you gone, yet no heavy matter.
Mr. Adams, how you doing?
I'm good, Mayor. I hope you're feeling better.
Thank you, I am.
All right, this is a very lengthy ordinance, but it is a, it's a new solar panel ordinance. And what it does is it changes some things in the old solar panel ordinance to allow the placement of solar panels on the roof of houses where it would catch the most sun, which will make it more productive. All right, this will be an ordinance to amend the Unified Land Development Code of the City of Douglas, Georgia by deleting chapter 13, section 1-7 designated permissible uses of solar electric systems or repeal all ordinance in conflict therewith for other, for other purposes. Be ordained by the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas, Georgia, in regular meetings and similar pursuant law authority there under the Unified Development Code of the City of Douglas, Georgia, as amended and stands amended as follows. Offered for the first time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners of the City of Douglas on May 14th, 2018. Revue the second time passed ordained as a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners on May 31st, 2018 after properly advertised the category required under the charter of the City of Douglas, Georgia, and is ready for review.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. At this time, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. It's been motioned and properly second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda are the items that were placed on the consent agenda. As always, our city manager, Mr. Jacobs, will read those off.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is the minutes for the May 14th meeting, 2018. And the next item is the purchase of pad mount transformers for warehouse inventory. Those are the items.
Outstanding. At this time, I entertain a motion for the items placed.
So moved.
Second. It's been motioned and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next on the agenda are work session items brought forward for discussion, and that will be our assistant city manager, Mr. Charlie Davis. How you doing?
Doing well, Mayor. How you doing?
Doing well.
Um, we have one item here, this is to a wholly public hearing on proposed FY19 budget. Recommendation is after being properly advertised on the Douglas enterprise, the proposed FY19 budget of $102,557,949 is ready for a public hearing. After the city attorney conducts a public hearing, if there's no objections, this item will be brought back at the next commission meeting for adoption.
At this time, I call to order a public hearing on the fiscal year 19, City of Douglas budget, provides for $102,558,549. If there's anyone here tonight who wishes to step forward and make a comment on this proposed budget, please step to the podium, state your name, your address, and whatever comments you may have. Apparently, there's no one, Mr. Mayor, will have the adoption of this on June 11th.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Next on the agenda, we have staff comments, and as always, Ms. Georgia Henderson, how you doing this evening?
Good evening. Doing well, you all. I just want to share some announcements with the community. We know that school is out, and kids and parents are eager to have fun, and we want to invite everyone on this Tuesday to our Summer Beach Bash. It's coming up on June the 5th, and it would be held here at the Vacan Light next to City Hall. We thank the Douglas Rotary Club for being our sponsor. We are still looking for community partners who would like to come in and showcase the resources that they have for the youth, or just any resources provided to adults in the community as well. The Beach Bash will be from 4 until 8 p.m. Also, we just want to, it's a little bit early, but we want to announce and go ahead and start putting it into mindset to everyone so they can lock the date in, September the 7th and 8th, the second weekend of September, that is the weekend of our South Georgia Barbecue and Outdoor Festival. At this time, we are accepting sponsors, vendors, as well as barbecue teams for the competition. We encourage everyone to go to our website to get the full details about the event and how to get registered. They can visit cityofdouglas.com/bbqfest, or call the Public Information, I'm sorry, Media Relations Division at 383-0277. This Saturday, always the first Saturday each month, we will be hosting another residential junk drop-off day on June the 2nd from 8 until 12 noon, and that is at the City Pole Yard across from the Police Department. Great time for residents to clean up around their yards and dispose freely of some items that you've just been willing to get rid of to avoid those landfill costs. Next week, the City of Douglas Utilities and the Customer Care Department will be rolling out a new online portal for our utility customers. This portal is going to allow customers to go in, they'll be able to take a view at their consumption of all utilities. To access that service, whenever they first go in, they will have to set up a username, password, be on the lookout. By the end of next week, our customer should receive a postcard in the mail with the instructions and details, along with a link that'll take them to that free service. But it's going to be a great opportunity for customers during the month to track their consumption on utilities. And so if you get a postcard, Douglas Utilities, our logo is on there, but you also may see another name called Utility Hulk, and that's what it's all about. And if you have any questions on that, you can always just dial 311, one call to City Hall. On June the 5th, the City of Douglas is hosting a blood drive here. Just want to invite everyone to come out and give blood. That's from 9 until 11:30 a.m. Always job opportunities with the City of Douglas, the current one we have are open year-round for police officers and firefighters. If you're interested, please sign up. And for all events, please feel free to visit our website, cityofdouglas.com, follow us on social media, we're on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. Thank you.
Outstanding. Thank you, Ms. Henderson. The next item on the agenda is the Mayor and Commissioner comments. Please be advised that, one, we have an executive session, and we'll move forward. Let's start out with Commissioner McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to say, you know how, I think every time we do this, I want to highlight ribbon cuttings and talk about people in Douglas who invested or reinvested in our community by opening a business or expanding their business here. And I just want to say congratulations to those of you who, the Drew House had a new ribbon cutting, we had, oh gosh, there were several, of course, we celebrated Memorial Day too this week, and that was a fun time for family and everything. But the new realty company there, we enjoyed doing their ribbon cutting. Also want to say that the Chamber of Commerce is so pleased to announce that we have a new, or they have a new, and I guess it's a joint partnership, and we welcome the new Douglas Coffee County Economic Development Authority President, Mr. John Henry, John A. Henry. And we look forward to meeting and getting to know Mr. Henry and welcoming him and his family to Douglas. And Mayor, I think that's all I have to say. Thank you, though.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I got some things on my thing. Would like to say we hope that everybody enjoyed their Memorial Day on past Monday. I really enjoyed mine. And we'd like to say congratulations on the past election that was on May 22nd, and the TESFLOs did pass, and we'll thank the Lord for that. And also, also, please do not forget about the upcoming election that will be, I think, in November, right?
Right.
And that's important, too, that we do not forget about that election also. And I did a poll on Facebook about electricity, our utility bill, and with the citizens, and we got some good comments, and, you know, and that's a great thing, because I had been brought on some statuses on Facebook from the past ones about highlight bills. And on those past, the past ones that we did, the poll I did the other day, reference, it was a great, great output, and the citizens replied to it, and, you know, they was just basically saying, I was basically telling them, if they have any problems with their utilities, please come by City Hall, Ms. Wanetta, voter, or customer care, or myself, because we have did this, we have talked to many people about their utility bills, we're not going to call it a light bill anymore, because we do more than lights. And we had a great, great thing on that. And also, I want to encourage, I haven't talked about this in a long time, but I'm going to be on this right now. Me and myself and our past Commissioner, Mr. Commissioner Johnny Lee Roper, the City of Douglas partnered in with the Miracle League for the Miracle Field. And I'm going to be asking, because me and Mr. Roper, we partnered together to raise these funds for this Miracle Field for our children, and this is the vision of Mr. Roper. He said that he seen, you know, a child that was disabled and couldn't go out the house and to play, just to give the history to give some citizens. And I would just like to see our community come together, businesses, churches, and everything, to please donate to this great cause, because this will bring monies, this will bring a field that the children can play, that are disabled, handicapped, and everything, also they can bring the parents with them. And I'm begging, I'm urging you, because we also have Kayla Day in the City of Douglas, which was my cousin, which was my uncle TH's granddaughter, and we just basically want to drive that, because our special needs need somewhere to go and somewhere to play. And I'm going to be asking for donations from each one of you, you know, and I'm going to stay on everybody about it, because I feel like that we need to drive this and see this come to fruition by Mr. Roper, because if he was here today, he'd want to see this field. Like he said, he want boots on the ground, and so that I'm going to help him do that. So that's all I really have to say, Mayor, and that's all.
Outstanding. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And representing the Mayor's Youth Council, we have with us this evening is the Junior Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Savannah Cart. How you doing?
Good. How are you?
I'm doing well.
The Mayor's Youth Council's last meeting was held on May the 17th. We recognized the police awareness and acknowledged the Police Department and Coffee County Sheriff Department. We officially adopted the corner on East Bryan Street. We had the youngest entrepreneur, Zapor, came and introduced her clothing line. And on May the 4th, we will be recognized by the Coffee County Commissioners, and we have our first orientation with our commissioners. And Team Court, if you still want to apply for applications, you still can, you can come see Ms. Wanetta.
Outstanding. Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor. How you doing?
I'm doing well. How are you?
All right, all right. I just want to take my hat off to thank the Fire Department, the Police Department. Since the last time we met, we had two fire in our City of Douglas, and the Fire Department along with the Police Department, first of all, the Police Department, if they wasn't on their patrol like they supposed to have been, you know, everything, who knows what would have happened. But thanks to the officer that was riding by and spotted the fire at Holt's Bakery, you know, and then the response from the police, from the Fire Department. Again, like I say, thank you, thank you, well-done job to do what you all did to keep it being no worse than what it was. Another thing is, we have, we have had a lot of rain in the last week, week and a half. Grass are getting high. To the citizen, we are trying to keep up with the grass cutting, but if there's a place that need cutting, feel free to call the City of Douglas, and they will direct you to the right area to get that grass cut, because there's snakes crawling, and we want to keep Douglas beautified. Also, just like to say, hats off to the, Mr. Durn?
That retired from the? Durn.
Durn, that retired from the Police Department. I saw it on Facebook.
Mr. Harper, Mr. Ryan.
Harper, okay, Harper, Mr. Harper. Saw it on Facebook when he gave his last call, and he got fooled, and I say, one of these days, I'm going to do the same thing at Walmart.
But you don't have radio.
I don't have to have one. I'm going to shout out, see you later, Walmart. But, you know, it's amazing that you can live to retire and enjoy life, you know, everything. So I wish him the best of luck, you know, and again, Fire Department, Mr. Wilson, Police Department, y'all done a fantastic job since the last time we met with everything that went on in the City of Douglas. Thank you all.
Outstanding. Let's jump to Commissioner Pierce. How are you doing?
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. How are you?
Doing well.
And good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
I'd like to just first commend the young people for excelling in athletics, track and swim, and also commend Mr. Ronnie Graham. He has been coaching a long, long time. That's, that's his passion. He loves that. I've known Ronnie a long time, and he was very active in sports, and I just commend him on the great job he's doing. The other thing that I'd like to say is I'd like to thank the citizens of Douglas Coffee County for going out supporting the TESFLOs. I know I asked several people to, to support it, you know, some people were like, you know, another penny added on, but anyway, it passed, and like I told them, it's a very worthwhile project, and that is the way that we can get a lot of infrastructure done that normally it would be difficult for us to get done with the resurfaces and road pavings and what have you, sidewalks, all of that. So we're very excited about that. The other thing that I'd like to say is that I trust that everybody had a good Memorial Day. That's where we pay our respects to those we memorialize, thank for their service to our country, to whatever, thank, you know, people have lost their lives, you know, serving this country. That brings me to a thought that I have concerning, I think I saw it somewhere, that the NFL owners decided to, whoever decided, NFL League, I'm not sure, I don't follow sports a great deal. The owners decided that the players would be fined or whatever if they do not stand for the National Anthem or whatever. And, you know, really, my perspective is that, is really, we're really at a sad time where they should have to be kneeling anyway, but they're kneeling because of what they believe and what they have faith in that's not happening, and that is the right to everybody to have the right to life. Because some people have lost their lives behind senseless killings that was just wrong, and they are trying to bring attention to what is happening in our country. And it seems like our country is becoming more divided instead of coming together to work on the issue. Everybody has so much to say about the athletes kneeling or whatever, but I don't see anybody trying to come together, to sit down, to talk, and say, what can we do to eradicate this problem with senseless killings? So to those of you here, to those of you who hear what I'm saying, anybody who has a clue as to what might be a feasible solution, I challenge you to, instead of us complaining about what the NFL players are doing and they're being disrespectful, let's try to reason together to try to see if we can come up with a solution. That's what I would really like to see. I really would. The last thing that I have, and Mr. Jacobs, I'm kind of concerned, because I have not seen anybody from the newspaper in quite some time, and I'm wondering, why don't we have? have the newspaper covering our meetings anymore? We don't, nobody's attending our meetings.
Well, you know, as you know, the enterprise is going to, once a week, and I don't know if they have hired any additional staff, writers in relationship to that as well. So that's one of the issues in regards to that. Now, I'm not aware about the Douglas now in relationship to that. I mean, so we, we put information out for the media in regards to all that, so we do all those things appropriate, but that's...
I just, I just wish that we could, I don't know, have coverage here. You know, and the reason I say that is because the way our staff might write up what happened in our meeting, the, the, the media might write it a little differently, and I'm not saying one way or the other if they write it fairly or unfairly, I'm not alluding to any of that, but anyway, I just wish, I mean, you know, because I know, like, they're supposed to be our legal organ, but nobody's covering our meetings. But it brings me to a concern that I have. I have a great concern, because I know sometime back, not just about myself, when the issues were going on with me, in the, in the public, about my court dealings or whatever, but I've noticed with certain city employees as well. I think I've seen stuff about Officer Sergeant Stacy Johnson, Stacy Williams, I'm sorry. I've seen stuff about former Officer Rick Smith. Whenever there was an incident going on in the Douglas PD or City Hall with certain people, it was covered, covered in our local newspaper. And I'm just concerned as to why the incident that we recently had to happen within our City of Douglas Police Department with two officers that were terminated, you know, none of that has been covered in the newspaper. That hasn't been covered. The incident, matter of fact, you, you, given your resignation, it was in the newspaper or, or social media the very next day or within a few days? Well, the issue with Chief Castellos, it hasn't been public. And I just, I have concern, it seem, it, it doesn't seem like they're being biased in how they're telling the news. They, they are. And, 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 you know, I'm just, I'm just dissatisfied with it. I'm dissatisfied with it. I don't know if it's based on color or what, but I know, I know it's not right. It's not right, and I can't continue to sit here quietly and not address it, you know? I mean, I, I deserve this, and it, it needs to be addressed. I don't know what's going on with Ms. Mayo. I plan to give her a call to find out and express my dissatisfaction, but, you know, in my opinion, silence is consent. If you see something going on and you know it's wrong and you don't say anything, you're just as guilty as the people that's doing it. It's time to speak up against things that's not right. So I think that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Pierce. Commissioner Moore?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to express my sympathy to Commissioner McNeil and the loss of her mother.
Thank you.
I've known her mother a long time, and we also lost one of our retired police officers, Joel Duren. He'd been a policeman for 37 years, and I believe, say, retired about 16, 18 years ago?
16 years.
16 years ago. And he wasn't but 72 years old, I believe. But we've lost a lot of people lately, and people seem not to be really worried about unless it affects them. And I lost two out of my son's school class. I won't change classes, I think. But anyhow, we do express sympathy to those who lost loved ones.
Thank you.
I've experienced that over the years, and it's not an easy thing to cope with, but some people seem to pass it by, but I do express that, and I did enjoy the Memorial Day honoring veterans. You know, there's one, still believe one veteran living that was on Pearl Harbor. I served with a guy that was on Pearl Harbor on Sunday morning when it was bombed, and he said, he put his hand on his cock, because he was laying in on Sunday morning, and rolled machine gun bullets ripped the cock open. He told me that a fellow was gunshot. He, he was, and I can't blame him, but anyhow, that's, I'm glad that we're still around to pay homage to those folks who served and are serving, because it's, it's the most thing to do.
Outstanding. Thank you, Commissioner Moore. My comments are as follows. First, I'm writing with my left hand, because I had a little accident Sunday. I do want to express condolences to Commissioner McNeil.
Thank you all so much. The city's been wonderful. Thank you all.
I can only say God's blessing.
Thank you.
God's blessing.
I appreciate it, and I felt that very much.
Pray that you find comfort.
Thank you.
My dad says, you never get over losing a parent, you just learn to live with it.
Yeah, that's true.
As you see up here, Commissioner Gowen is not here. He had some family activities, and I'm sure our guy Benjamin is making it family fun. Benjamin is making it family fun. Father's Day is coming up, so let's make sure that the women out there take care of their fathers and husbands. To the first Lady Chevelle, there's nothing at Bass Pro Shop that your husband wants, nothing at all.
He needs, he needs a suit with the right arm cut out, okay? Don't you think that would be a good gift, Chevelle?
Why, why, why?
I'm sorry.
I'm such a man of great humility.
You are, indeed.
Okay, don't fall out the chair.
Indeed. I'm sorry, Mayor, I couldn't resist.
The next thing is, the, the class of 1952 to 1954 has asked me to speak to them this Saturday, and to show them where Douglas was and how we're progressing. And Ms. Henderson, her staff, put together a mind-blowing presentation. I would ask that each of you take a look at that. As I alluded to earlier, I'm writing with my left hand, or I'm scribbling with my left hand, trying to make investments in my community and trying to save money. I do a lot of the stuff myself. I was climbing up on the ladder Sunday, and the front pockets of my shorts caught the top of the roof, and I tried to grab hold. Next thing I know is I was upside down. My foot was caught on the first or second step of the ladder. Most people that know me, I was medically retired from the military. I've had two back surgeries, so I was trying to protect my back. So I reached back, but it was too late, so my right shoulder fell on the concrete, broke my shoulder, and suffered a mild concussion. They think I may have a hairline fracture, so that's the reason for my casual dress. Suits don't fit right now.
I know.
And initially...
I was that way with my hands.
Let me, let me say this right here. One of the reasons that I get to be me is because of God and my family's support. When we went into the hospital, we told security, it is going to get crowded. It is going to get crowded. And security said, oh, we'll be all right. About 10 minutes later, hey, we gonna need some help marching out here. That family that God has blessed me with is amazing, and they have supported me dearly. So initially, thought I was gonna have to have surgery Wednesday. Dr. Barber, who's my physician, thought initially that it was going to be a surgery scheduled for Wednesday. However, he consulted a couple of his colleagues. One of his colleagues that is actually the physician for the Atlanta Braves said that they would not treat it with surgery. So I'm gonna be walking around with this thing here for a few months, and my daughters, if anybody knows me, not only do I love my daughters, but I also fear my daughters. They can be very pointed when it comes to their dad. They put a public service announcement on Facebook that if anybody see their daddy on a ladder, call them, and they'll handle it from there. Dr. Barber was telling me, hey, you need to rest, you need to do this, you need, I said, look, man, you don't even have to worry about that. Destiny and Kiara, I do not want to have a conversation with them. Just don't want to do that. To get serious for a moment here, Commissioner Pearson referenced the media, and I was going to say, one of the reasons, I talked to a couple of the media outlets, and they said, there's absolutely nothing going on that's entertaining at our meetings. Now, I am concurrent and agree with you about some of the other stuff not being in the paper. I, I agree with that 100%. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that. We celebrated Memorial Day. Being a vet, I see numerous vets here in the audience. I want to say thank you for your service. And sometimes, what those vets are currently defending and what they defended in the past is an idea, is an idea of America. When America was first formed, the other country said it wouldn't last. Says no way that the people can govern themselves. Well, during that time, when we orchestrated free speech, free speech has been at the fabric of freedom, being able to peacefully protest. The NFL has done what they have done. What is amazing to me is that the Supreme Court, the highest court in the land, said that it is okay to burn the American flag, and that is not illegal. So every NFL player can go into the stadium and set the American flag afire, and nothing can be done to them. Nothing can be done to them. I think that when we are bound or limited to how we protest, that's not American. It's not American. And that's one of the things. I tell folks this all the time. February the 5th, 1982, the Ku Klux Klan was marching at Fort Polk, Louisiana. Marching, Fort Polk, Louisiana. Sergeant First Class Oliver J. Tiller. We were not going to defend the Ku Klux Klan. The City of Leesville, Louisiana, did not have the law enforcement power to defend the Ku Klux Klan. They had honestly obtained a marching permit. Being young and naive and being impressionable, I chose to stand with my comrades, Asians, Koreans, Americans, Hispanics, all wearing the same uniform, all a member of the 3rd Battalion, 21st Field Artillery, standing together. We were not going down there to defend the Ku Klux Klan. Sergeant First Class Oliver J. Tiller came around the building with his M16, and we were like, Smoke, why are you doing that? That's the Ku Klux Klan. He said, because you would never know when this country needs another Dr. Martin Luther King. They are marching under the same laws that allow Dr. King to march, that we all benefit from. So if I have to die today to protect that right for the Ku Klux Klan to march, I will, because there may be a need for another Dr. Martin Luther King. So I am sad at the actions of the NFL, but I'm an American. We always prevail. We always get through the darkest of times. We have always been a beacon of light to the rest of the world. This is just a date. This does not come to a defining moment. So I tell all citizens, always be humble and thankful that you live in this country that God Almighty has created. At this time, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So move.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We are in executive session. At this time, we will have to have everyone to depart. We'll take about five...